Good evening, and welcome candidates, you in the audience and those viewing at home. This is the Candidate Forum for the Johnson County Board of Supervisors. I’m Tessa Heron, and I’ll be the moderator for tonight’s evening’s forum for the League of Women Voters, Johnson County. The forum is being livestreamed on the League’s Facebook page. It is also being filmed for rebroadcast on the three public education and government channels in Iowa City, Corralville, and North Liberty. Please check their websites for scheduling. Additional information about candidates may be found on the League’s website, vote411.org. The League of Women Voters is a volunteer, nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes any party or candidate, which is why we have the policy that campaign literature is welcome outside of this room following the forum, and no buttons, signs, or literature can be worn or distributed inside of this room. The League does take positions after considerable study of issues, and acts to influence decision-makers on those issues. We work to not only register voters, but also to provide them with information on issues to assist their participation in government. Membership is open to anyone 16 years of age or older. Please join us. There is a table set up in the lobby where you can find more information about membership. We can use your time, your talent, and your financial resources. Democracy works best when more people are involved. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates. All viable candidates have been invited to participate. The format for this evening is as follows: After candidates have been introduced, they will each have two minutes for opening remarks. We will then present questions to them, starting with one from the League, followed by questions submitted on cards by you in the audience. League members are distributing cards and pencils for you to write questions on. You may submit as many written questions for the candidates as you wish. Hold up the cards, and a League member will collect them throughout the forum and bring them to me to read. Questions that fall in the same general category may be consolidated. If time does not allow for all questions to be addressed, you may contact the candidates directly after the forum or at another time. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. Due to the timeframe, there will not be time for rebuttals. Near the end of the scheduled time for this event, each candidate will have two minutes for closing remarks. Speaking order will be rotated throughout the evening. There is a member of the League in the front row, Jean, who will be our timekeeper, using cards to alert candidates when time is about up and when time is up. Tonight, we have three candidates running for two seats on the Johnson County Board of Supervisors, a four-year term: Pat Hayden, Democrat; Phil Hemingway, Republican; and Janelle Reddick, Democrat and incumbent. Let’s get started with opening statements. Please speak directly into the microphone so you can be heard here and over the television broadcast. Let’s begin with your two-minute opening statements, starting with Pat.
Very good. Hello, everyone. It’s a pleasure to be here tonight. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. As I look out into the audience and see so many familiar faces, I know you all know my story. You’ve heard it before. I was born and raised on a dairy farm in western Iowa, and survived growing up with four brothers. You know Johnson County has been my home for more than 40 years. You know I raised two daughters, Lindsay and Ariel, here, that I retired from Oaknall Retirement Residence after 36 years of service. And you know my passion for public service comes from my mom, who served as a Crawford County Supervisor for 14 years, after which she ran against Steve King for a seat in the Iowa Senate. I am a proud Democrat, and I have been working hard campaigning for a seat on the Johnson County Board of Supervisors for almost three years. Over the last year, I have attended in-person the majority of the work sessions and informal and formal supervisor board meetings. I have spent this entire time reaching out to people throughout the county, listening, asking questions, and learning. I have served on committees, and have attended events, celebrations, and community gatherings, engaging in so many great conversations. While I have learned a lot, I still have much to learn, but I am ready to take my place on the Johnson County Board of Supervisors and work with Janelle and the other supervisors to make Johnson County the best that it can be for all who call this county home.
Mr. Hemingway?
Thank you. My name is Phil Hemingway. I was born and raised in Johnson County on my family’s century farm. I worked on my family’s farm after graduating high school. I was given a unique opportunity to work on Roy Carver’s cattle ranch in Belize, Central America, where I did for five years, and that’s where I met my lovely wife, Anita. It was a great experience. I worked with a lot of people from a lot of different backgrounds, and it was a remote frontier operation, and I learned a lot working with people and getting along with people from different ways of life. I was elected to the Iowa City School Board in 2015, and have served in that capacity. Some of my accomplishments on the school board have been reducing the chemical usage in and on our school grounds dramatically, also getting FFA. I was the board representative on our FFA steering committee, which brought ag education and FFA to our school district for the first time ever. And I am very proud of my work to include all students, whether it be with special education or inclusion with students on all levels in our schools. I guess I’m the reason we’re here. I sought my party’s convention to put me on the ballot, so we have an actual election instead of a coronation. And I think it’s important that the community have a choice to vote and to have a role in how our county is run. Thank you.
Ms. Reddick?
I’m Janelle Reddick. I really appreciate the League of Women Voters having this forum. For full truth, I’ve been a League member, I think, for over 20 years. Thanks to the League, and Pat, and Phil for being willing to change the time of this scheduled forum. I was in Ireland celebrating my 30th anniversary with my spouse, Robin Butler, and I brought back a cold, so let me apologize for any hacking I may do. I’ve been a resident of Johnson County since 1990. Like many people, we came here for Robin to work on her PhD, and we fell in love with the community and decided to stay. Prior to moving here, I worked for a presidential campaign in the Illinois Legislature, and after we moved here, I worked for Congress. I served on committees at the city level, the Airport Commission, the county level, the Trails Advisory Committee, and at the state level, the Department of Natural Resources, Natural Resources Commission. I’m running for my third term on the Board of Supervisors, and I have a lot of reasons that I decided to run again, but a number of them, I’ll list real quickly, is the county raised the minimum wage, but the state took away our right to enforce that. I believe poverty issues and wage issues are important in that we need leaders in that area, and I will continue to do so. I’ve been involved in increasing sustainability and conservation in trails. I helped create the Community ID. I helped create the county’s funding for affordable housing and increase the funding for social services. I have a strong union record, and I have a history of being fiscally responsible. I’m running for reelection because I bring a progressive, measured, thoughtful, informed voice to issues, and I provide a realistic approach to budgeting. I really look forward to all your questions, and thank you very much for having me.
Okay, thanks. The first question is from the League of Women Voters. “The Johnson County League of Women Voters recommends that all governments within the county work together for the betterment and advantage of all residents. What role do you see for the Johnson County Board of Supervisors in promoting collaboration? Specifically, what areas such as school boards, city councils, sheriff’s departments, and others do you think would benefit from working together?” And we’ll start this one off with Phil.
Okay. Well, first off, everybody who runs for political office says, “Yeah, I want to work with everybody else,” but in reality, a lot of times, there’s missed opportunities. This afternoon, we all, well, Janelle and I were at a Joint Entities Meeting where we get together and discuss what’s going on with our different organizations and things like that. And it’s important that we know what each other is doing and things along those lines, but there are great opportunities for collaboration, and many times, I’m frustrated as a school board member that we can’t work tighter with the city on parks, on common-use facilities, and things like that, and there’s limited parts of the pie that we’re all kind of fighting on, and it’s important that we collaborate and utilize and pool funds whenever possible.
Ms. Reddick?
Thanks to the League of Women Voters, governments meet together quarterly, and we used to call it joint cities, and unfortunately, it started because of a school issue where a school was put in the middle of nowhere and on rock roads, and that remains a problem that continues to happen. And so, the Joint Entity Meeting, the quarterly meeting, was this afternoon, and I think that’s just the tip of our iceberg, is getting together and talking about issues. The Board of Supervisors goes out and meets with every city. We try to meet with the urban area every year, and the smaller communities every second or third year. But there are many things we can collaborate on. Right now, we’re collaborating on paratransit and housing ambulances. We do a lot of roads projects together, but I believe that we need to have, for example, regional transit authority. I think there are ways to combine resources in law enforcement and reduce the cost to everyone of law enforcement. There are many ideas out there, and I hope that we can have this ongoing dialogue with the League of Women Voters’ support and keep pushing that.
Ms. Hayden?
Yes, thank you. There are a number of 28E agreements. Those are the intergovernmental agreements that exist between the counties and the municipalities that have really been very, very successful over the years. That may be shared sheriff’s services and even disaster preparedness. These agreements are important, and they do create efficiencies for the benefit of both the city and the county. While continuing to pursue these, I do believe that we must focus just as much on better communication and create more opportunities for open dialogue and cooperation between the municipalities and counties. It’s the type of thing that, you know, we’ve just come a long way, and we’re working well together, but we can always do better in this area.
Okay, thanks. And I’m going to go into this next question, which is kind of the opposite side of the collaboration coin. How do you intend to manage conflicts of interest specifically in the context of serving on other boards? And we’ll start with you, Janelle.
Well, as my role as a county supervisor, we serve on a lot of boards and commissions, and we rotate that responsibility every January. So conflicts will always be that the county is the primary, and if there was a conflict to come up on those boards and commissions, we would need to recuse ourselves at that level. But most, all the boards and commissions I serve on are mandatory to the Board of Supervisors right now. I believe conflicts are best handled by complete transparency and open government, and I think that through that, you can reveal a lot of your biases and conflicts, and make sure the public understands which role you’re playing and every step that you play. It rarely comes up as a county supervisor for us, but when it does, we make that known. And I believe that our relationship with the cities and the school boards are just getting stronger as we go along.
Okay. Pat?
Yes. I think if there are any conflicts of interest, of course, the first thing is full disclosure and transparency. It is optimal, and so important to do that, and to recuse oneself, again, because of transparency if there is any question. I can’t think right now what any conflict of interest would be, but absolutely, the most important thing is full disclosure and recusing oneself if there’s any question about that.
Okay. Phil?
Yeah. Well, I think the question is probably addressed to me. Yeah, I am presently on the Iowa City School Board. I plan to stay in that capacity until my term ends in November of 19, when successfully elected to the Johnson County Supervisors. It would only be a period of 10 months where I’d be in both capacities. The Secretary of State’s website cites conflict of interest and refers to a situation where someone does serve as a county supervisor and as a school board member, and it is not referred to as a conflict. So I am transparent and open in everything I do. I work a lot with boards. I saw them, I nail them, and I paint them, so I have a lot of experience in that area. Thank you.
Okay. And we’ll start back again with Pat, this next question, and this is kind of a softball. Do you support, oh, sorry, no, not that one.
I want the easy ones.
Yeah, yeah, this is a kind of get-to-know-you question. What specific skills do you have, other than oratory, that will make you a good supervisor?
You know, I always say that the skills I learned at Oaknall as the executive director will really serve me very, very well. I’m a strong and experienced leader. I can facilitate cooperation and compromise and common sense. I can provide strong fiscal management and prudent use of resources, and I would encourage staff to be the best they could be, and mentor them and encourage them. My passion is relationship building. I absolutely believe that that’s where it starts, building strong relationships, respectful relationships, so that when we need to handle and discuss difficult issues and come to consensus, we have that strong foundation where we could work forward and move towards consensus.
Okay. Phil?
Oh, thank you. I am an ASE Certified Master Technician. I’m also an ASE Certified Engine Machinist/Welder, worked in construction, a farmer. Spent five years in an area where I was the only American, and I had to work with a different government, had to work with people of different languages and different cultures. With my work on the school board, I’ve had to work with administration, and teachers, and staff, and stakeholders, and that, and oversaw a budget larger than the county. Gosh, what have I left off on? I live in a house where I am outnumbered, as far as there’s more women than men, and get along fine there, so I think that my experience with working in different areas, I spent five years working between Africa and the former Soviet Union, in different remote areas with local workers there, so I have experience working with a lot of different people. Thank you.
I have a liberal arts background. I have a bachelor’s from Knox College in Galesburg, and it has defined everything else I’ve done in my life. I like issues. I like a variety of issues, which is a good thing, because the Johnson County Board of Supervisors changes topics about every 30 seconds. And so, you have to study deeply, you have to think about issues deeply, and you have to keep your eye on the larger picture. And I think I’m well-skilled in all of those areas. I also am a numbers person. I actually like budgets. I like financial reports. They speak to me in a way, they help me define where we’re headed and how we’re going to pay for it. And so, my skills in that area and my interest in that area, I think being a Johnson County Supervisor requires someone that will study issues deeply, think about it, and ask really hard questions, and not jump to conclusions, and I feel like I have all those characteristics.
Okay, thanks. And this next question has been asked a few different times, so it’s a hot one. People want to know what you think about the sustainability of confined animal feeding operations, CAFOs, whether you support them in Johnson County, and more specifically, do you support a moratorium on new or expanded CAFOs in Johnson County until we have local control of siding for CAFOs and an improved master matrix? And we’ll start with you, Phil.
Well, I’m a farmer. When I was, one of my first jobs I can remember is pounding on the cement forms when my father put in a small confinement hog operation in Graham Township, and I didn’t have to stoop, I had to reach to hit the form. Everyone else was stooping. So I was fairly young. Agriculture is important to our county and our state. As far as the establishment of larger-scale operations, that’s a state concern, but locally, we’re going to have agriculture going forward. It’s going to be many, we’re going to have niche agriculture, we’re going to have traditional agriculture, and I think that, well-regulated and with local control, we can manage, going forward, what is necessary with our agriculture and that. But, I mean, animals are going to be raised in Johnson County in the indefinite future.
I oppose any more CAFOs in Johnson County. Johnson County already has too many confined animal feeding operations. They’re not actually agriculture, they’re heavy industrial, and they should be zoned that way. Until Iowa can get a hold on this, we have to have a moratorium. Our air and water quality are deteriorating rapidly, and CAFOs are a large contributor to that. And so, I’ll do everything in my power to make sure that local government gets control and that we can regulate them. If other counties around the state want CAFOs, then they should consider that, but I think the people of Johnson County would prefer to have clean water and clean air, and I believe the state has to address this issue. It’s not just a Republican or Democratic issue. County supervisors across the state have signed on to the moratorium. I’m proud Johnson County did, and I think we have a lot of work to do, and I hope people will vote that way.
Okay. Pat?
Obviously, we all can agree that CAFOs are an environmental concern, both with the air quality and water quality. I do support responsible farming. I do support responsible farmers. Ag is a big part of our economy. It’s significant for this state and for this county. I absolutely believe that the first step is taking a look at that master matrix and fix the permit process. I also believe that the state must step up and address the issue of something that it has not been willing to do thus far, and we need to continue to push that. And I also believe that all stakeholders need to be a part of the process and a part of the solution.
Okay. Thank you. And this next one will start with you, Janelle. It’s another animal-themed question. “The Johnson County Fairgrounds are not owned by the county, they’re owned by a nonprofit organization. Each year, this organization receives public money from Johnson County, our tax money, to support this fair, which includes a kids’ rodeo. The amount this year was $103,000. The kids’ rodeo includes mutton busting, riding sheep, goat tying, junior bull riding, and other events that involve terrified animals. I, not me personally, the writer of this question, and many other Johnson County residents, are requesting that the Board of Supervisors stop funding the Johnson County Fairgrounds and fair unless the kids’ rodeo is eliminated. If you are a member of the Board of Supervisors, will you support this effort?
The Johnson County Agriculture Association is a nonprofit organization which anyone can join, and they have an annual meeting and elect their board of directors. Their annual meeting was last week, I think, or two weeks ago. And the county’s funding for the Johnson County Agriculture Association isn’t precisely to fund any single event, including the fair itself, it’s to fund the fairgrounds in general, so that community theater can be there, Jingle Cross, various events, fundraisers for nonprofits, and that the fair will be free and the parking will be free. I urge everyone that has concerns about that event, any event, at the fairgrounds to get involved in the Johnson County Agriculture Association, go to their meetings, and talk to their board of directors. But to discontinue funding would end emergency management. That’s our staging ground for disasters and for nuclear fallout from the Palo Nuclear Site. So it would be short-sighted to stop county funding for the fairgrounds and all of the activities out there, but I hope people get involved with the nonprofit.”
Okay. Thanks, and Pat?
This is a new one for me, so thank you very much. So without having a lot of information, my first thought is stopping funding is, you know, the end game, and my question would be, what type of conversation has taken place prior to this so that all parties could be heard? And quite frankly, I do think at this point, it is short-sighted to stop the funding. And again, I would push about, you know, having those conversations and really being thoughtful and deliberate in trying to work through these issues, and hopefully come to some sort of consensus and move forward.
All right. Phil?
Could you read the question again? I’m just...
Certainly. Do you want all of the detail or the background leading up to it?
No, I don’t need the background.
Just the end?
Yeah.
Okay. “The writer of this question and many other Johnson County residents are requesting the Board of Supervisors to stop funding the Johnson County Fairgrounds and fair until the kids’ rodeo is eliminated. If you’re a member of the board, would you support this?
No.
Any more?
No.
Period.
No, I am a big supporter of the fair. The fair was the cultural culmination of the summer for a rural four-age participant, and very fond family memories of going to the fair and spending the week there, and we want that memory and that participation for our next generation as well.
Okay. And this next one will start with you, Pat. “Do you think the county’s insurance policy should include paying for transgender reassignment surgery?
Wow, that’s an interesting question. I guess my answer to that would be certainly, I would be in favor of exploring that with the current insurance company.
Okay. Phil?
Yeah, that’s one I hadn’t anticipated. I’d have to research that one and get a little talking with some people and that, but I wouldn’t be able to comment on it at this time.
Okay. Phil?
Yes, I absolutely do think that county’s insurance policy should cover gender reassignment surgery. As a matter of fact, I recommended it, and it already does. It’s important that we understand that being transgendered and the medical procedures behind it are medical procedures, and in this era of attacking people for being different, I just think is shameful. And so, I’m very pleased that Johnson County has led on civil rights for LGBTQ people, and was the first county in the state to have a civil rights ordinance that protected people based on sexual orientation and gender identity, and we’ve continued to lead on that issue by adding it to our insurance policy. It cost the taxpayers absolutely nothing, and it was a very good deal, and it was long overdue.
Okay. And we’ll start with you, this next one, Mr. Hemingway. “Where do you stand on the increased minimum wage? If it were to come up again with local control, would you support it, and why or why not?
Well, I’ve been my whole life an advocate for increasing career and technical and the skill level and the value of workers. I’m a blue-collar worker. I’ve worked with my hands my entire life, and I’m interested in making sure people make $50,000 a year instead of just $15 an hour. And that’s where I put my energy in raising the skill level and the marketability of our community, and that’s why I fought on the school board to increase career and technical offerings, and for the first time, getting ag education into our schools.”
Okay. Janelle?
Well, I’m kind of disappointed you didn’t answer the question about minimum wage, so let me take it on. I fully support increasing the minimum wage. The state legislature should have done that. It should be indexed to inflation. It’s now 1027 in Johnson County, and while we can’t enforce it, I expect employers to follow it, and if they don’t, workers should take that into their own hands. Upward pressure on wages will increase wages up and down the ladder, and we can’t expect people to work 40 hours and be living in poverty. Even at 1027, you’re still not going to be able to pay all of your bills. A living wage in Johnson County gets closer to 14 and change, and we need to keep fighting for people who are working and keeping our economy going. I’m proud to have been part of raising the minimum wage, and I’m proud to have a lobbying position of a county to increase it statewide. I believe that local control will come back to us, and that when it does, we should be fully ready to continue to increase minimum wage in Johnson County. I’m also glad that the county pays a minimum of $15 for all of its employees, including part-time and elections of deputies.
Okay. Pat?
I absolutely support increasing the minimum wage, and I’ll take that one step further, that I support a livable wage. It’s a basic human right, that along with affordable housing. And I absolutely have supported the supervisors with the progress that they have made in moving the wage to a better hourly wage, in spite of the state not enacting public policy to do the same. I also want to just applaud the Center for Work- I also want to just applaud the Center for Worker Justice, working with the Board of Supervisors and with the businesses, and encourage them to support the minimum wage. So absolutely, and again, I'm really looking at a livable wage.
Okay, thank you. And we'll start this next one with Janelle. "What is your opinion of the future land use map and the new county comprehensive plan?"
So I think the comprehensive plan started out really strong. There was a lot of public involvement, a lot of public engagement. But in the end, the process was rushed by the Board of Supervisors and decisions were top-down. I believe that we should have taken a little more time. Planning and zoning didn't have adequate time to review it, and the changes that were made were rushed through to a vote, so thus I voted no. I also believe that the land use map in it should have had more public scrutiny and more input. And already, last week, there is a change in the comprehensive plan that needs to be done. If we'd have taken our time, we might have found that stuff ahead of time. We were in a rush to pass it, I think, for political reasons, and I think that was a mistake. In the end, I'm a rule follower, so this is the plan we have, and I will follow the rules, and I will vote accordingly. But I do believe it will need amendments, and that last Thursday, that became clear.
Okay, Pat?
In general, I do support the comprehensive plan. The land use plan in particular, I did not support the process, and Janelle alluded to that. Again, planning and zoning really didn't have the input and the time that they needed to really work with the Board of Supervisors on this, as well as the Citizen Committee that was appointed by the Board of Supervisors and actually put in about 18 months of work in reviewing the whole comprehensive plan. Many of them felt slighted and felt that their recommendations were not heard.
Phil?
Yeah, we need a supervisor with an ag background, and we need some different voices at the table, some that are not so quickly dismissive of other viewpoints and other opinions. And we need smart growth. We need preservation of farmland. We need transparency, and we need to make sure we don't promote leapfrog development, which puts us in bad positions.
Okay, this next one will start back with you, Pat. "Do you support Johnson County being a sanctuary county?"
I do support the stance that the county has taken as far as embracing the immigrant population and also will not be involved in voluntary detaining of immigrants or any type of raids that may take place in the county. It is incumbent on us to really reach out in partnership with our immigrant communities and support them in any way that we can. So if that means supporting a sanctuary city, you bet it does.
Okay, Phil?
I support immigrants. My wife is a first-generation immigrant. My mother-in-law is here legally and has her citizenship. My brother-in-law, Danny, went through the legal process to become a citizen. It took him seven years, and he's a doctor to get in here legally, so this is a national issue that has to be addressed. I know firsthand what it's like to be working in a foreign country. This is my social security card for Belize. This is my driver's license, and fortunately, it's expired. And this is my permanent residency card, which I obtained, which allows me the ability to work there. So it's important that we follow the rule of law, but still, that we be welcoming to immigrants in our community.
Okay, Janelle?
I don't believe human beings are illegal, no matter what. I believe human beings are human beings, and immigration has made this a great country. Everyone in this country forever immigrated from somewhere. And so I believe that the war on immigrants is shameful, and I am not interested in being a county that participates in that. The county is not a sanctuary county. There's actually not a definition of sanctuary county or city. You're only a sanctuary county if you're, say you're a sanctuary county. What we said is that we would not illegally detain people on a ICE request. And I say illegally because you're taking away their civil liberties. If someone is arrested for public intoxication or some other reason, or is brought to the jail for a misdemeanor, holding them beyond the time you normally would should be illegal in this country and has been illegal by court rulings. I fully support the county not allowing our employees to participate with ICE and not detaining people longer than they need to for whatever they are arrested for.
Okay, thank you. And this is a multiple question as well, and we'll start with you, Phil. Cedar Rapids changed their Board of Supervisors from five to three. Do you think Johnson County will or should go this route? That would be Lynn County, I guess, not just Cedar Rapids.
Well, that would have to be decided by the community. If that were to be put on the ballot, I think that, you know, the community should weigh in on that. It's interesting to look at what Lynn County has done there. I think we need to look at getting greater rural representation on our supervisors, on the Board of Supervisors. And I think looking at that, that would have to be decided by the public. They would have to put it on the ballot, and what the community decides is how we would go on that.
Okay, Janelle?
Phil lives about two blocks from me and about four blocks from Pat, so no one up here would do what Phil is asking happen. The county used to have three supervisors, and I think back in the day, the League of Women Voters was involved in that, leading to five. And the reason is, if you want a citizen government, the more voices at the table are helpful. And if you go to three, it will be more staff-driven, and I think that separates out. As it is now, Johnson County and many of the larger counties are managers and policymakers. And it's a big county and a lot of responsibilities. We've served on dozens of boards and commissions and committees, and the workload would change drastically and would involve more professional staff. I think we would lose representation right now. Two of our supervisors are from the unincorporated area, and I don't think, if we went to districts and three people, you would find that disappearing.
Okay, Pat?
Yes, I believe a board of five supervisors really gives the residents of the county more representation and ensures that all voices are heard. Decreasing that size really would decrease that representation considerably, potentially stifling robust conversation and potentially eliminating differing opinions and ideas.
Okay, thank you. And this next one, we will start with you, Janelle. Someone's done their research. "All three of you are now or once were a member of the Republican Party. How long were you a member of the GOP and why are you still a member, or why did you switch parties?"
I'm happy to take this one. I grew up in Illinois and I went to Knox College in the land of Lincoln. I admired Abraham Lincoln when I was a kid, and I continue to do so. My college is the only remaining site of the Lincoln-Douglas debates. And when I joined the Republican Party right at college, the party was a much different location. In 1992, when Pat Robertson stood there at the national stage and said, at the national convention, "This was a fight for the cultural soul of our country," I knew that I was in the wrong party. I continued to stay there a little bit longer to go to conventions and caucus and introduce marriage equality and civil rights bills for people based on their sexual orientation. But in 1998, I realized that I no longer could be a part of a party. As a lesbian, a feminist, pro-choice, environmentalist, there just really wasn't a home for me. I knew that over 20 years ago. And I was working for Democrats and donating and volunteering for Democrats long before that.
Okay, Pat?
Yes, although my roots are deep in the Democratic Party, when I came to, I was sitting in the '70s, like almost everyone else did, I registered as an independent because we were voting on the issue, and so that was what we did. During my time as a voter, I had switched from independent to Democrat to Republican and back to Democrat. I have recently, obviously, earned a spot on the Democratic ticket because I won in the Democratic primary. I'm a member of the Democratic Central Committee. I'm an active member of the party, working hard for the party and for people like Fred Hubbell and Zach Walls and Kevin Kennedy and Jody Clemens and all the other candidates up and down that Democratic ballot. Most importantly, I believe and live the Democratic principles each and every day.
Okay, Phil?
Yeah, well, that's why I feel so comfortable up here with all my fellow Republicans or past Republicans. But I'm not going to apologize for being a Republican. I'm a proud Republican, and it is the party of Lincoln. And do I agree with everything my party stands for? No. Did I abandon it? No. I stand for fiscal responsibility, but I'm a progressive Republican and I'm socially liberal. And I work to, I don't want to, I don't, I won't dwell, but since we're talking about it, you know, one party has, outside of a blizzard and a special election, has controlled county government for 60 years. There aren't too many examples of one-party rule around the world that ends successfully or are successful. And I think it's important that all voices be heard and all opinions be shared, and that a group that has diversity of thought makes better decisions than one of one party that all think alike.
Okay, thank you. And we'll start back with you on this one, Pat. "Do you believe the issue of closing Hoover Elementary School is a done deal or still up for discussion?"
Well, quite frankly, I think it's probably a done deal. The facilities plan that Bon was approved, I don't know, a year, year and a half ago, and that site, the plan is to have City High renovated and move into that area. My children went to Lemmy School. My oldest daughter is 32, Ariel is 28. And although I support the schools and support the school district, it is something that I have looked at and been interested from afar. And I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, Phil?
Yeah, it's a $14 million asset that would be a waste to destroy. The renovations for the new gymnasium and facilities at City High don't go onto the Hoover footprint, and that the initial, or what they're looking to put on there are tennis courts and parking. And I would hate to destroy a $14 million asset that we own and is air-conditioned and renovated for parking and sports, which we could easily partner with the city and do at another facility. I was one of the dissenting votes that denied every citizen in the Iowa City Community School District the right to cast a ballot. That was wrong, and I'm proud of that vote. That was also a vote that, you know, when we went in, our legal administration and staff was telling us, "Vote against it," or "Take it off the ballot." And I was for putting it on the ballot and letting the public do it, and the courts have proven me correct.
Okay, Janelle?
So I'm not now and nor have I ever ran for school board. I represent five full school districts and parts of four others, and so I try to stay out of their politics. I think that school board, people run for school board, and they should have an opinions on these. As an environmentalist, I believe in local schools, and I believe that all kids should be able to bike and walk to school. But that's the extent of my willingness to talk about school board issues. I'll leave that up to the school board.
Okay, thank you. And this next one will start with you, Phil. "Do you support building affordable housing units at the county poor farm?"
You know, Kurt Frees and I have talked about that. I look at it. I think that there's a lot of opportunity to do things at the poor farm. I hope that the county and the school district can collaborative work together with ag education and with FFA. Having that being such a short distance to West High, it would definitely be beneficial if we could do some things there jointly. But it's something I definitely would look at, and Kurt and I have discussed that, and I'd look forward to discussing that further.
Janelle?
No, I do not support urban sprawl on the county farm. The county farm has been owned by the people of Johnson County for over 150 years. It's never been developed, and I believe it should be used for the public and shouldn't have personal ownership, which housing would do. We are not creating any more open space, and it's being gobbled up, and so what open space we have, we shouldn't be selling off. I believe that it's disingenuous to buy land in other parts of the county and then try to sell off land we already have for housing. I think the poor farm should be used for the people. It should be open space in agriculture and local foods and public events, trails. I believe that open space, we will regret ever selling a square foot of it. We've already developed too much there.
Okay, thank you. Pat?
I do not support affordable housing on the county poor farm. I absolutely believe that affordable housing needs to be in established neighborhoods and be just one type of housing amongst different types of mixed housing. I particularly believe this because it's so very important that services be readily available also, and probably one of the most important services, of course, is transportation. And although I think there's limited transportation out there close to the poor farm, it in no way would be adequate to support affordable housing. And again, I think it's just so important to have it within neighborhoods. Neighborhoods create communities.
Okay, thank you. And this next one will start with you, Janelle. And I've only got three questions left. If anyone has anything to add, we're still open.
They're back there on that table.
Maybe raise your hand, yeah. All right. "What do you see as the county board's most intractable problem, and what will you do in the future to tackle it?"
I used to answer this, growth, growth, and growth, but I'm going to modify that. I think poverty is the largest issue we're facing. The county haves and have-nots are getting farther apart. As we build more 350 to half a million dollar homes, people living in poverty are growing. 19,000 of us are food insecure. 21,000 and change are living in poverty. People can't afford to live here. Many of the service industry jobs, people just simply can't exist on. And so I think the county's role in both advocating, agitating, and helping fund poverty programs is an ongoing challenge. We've now funded over $1.8 million for affordable housing, and that's a drop in the bucket. We've increased services for social services. We've changed our requirements for general assistance, and we just have a lot more work to do.
Okay, thank you. And Pat?
I too believe that poverty and food insecurity is a huge issue for this county, and a piece of that, I think, is the childcare crisis that we're experiencing. And this is something that I've been thinking about probably for the last month. I've been at two different programs, one that was sponsored by the supervisors, the Poverty Summit. But I wrote down just some figures that I think are staggering. 76% of Johnson County households have both parents working. There are a little over 22,000 children who are between infancy and 12 years of age. Licensed-registered spaces, childcare spaces available in Johnson County are just a little over 9,000. So that means that we have a shortage of about 13,000 spaces for childcare. And 26% of licensed, registered centers really closed in the last five years. 50 to 70 children are on waiting lists at any given time. This is a huge problem. It's not only a family problem, but it's a workforce issue.
All right, thank you. And Phil?
Yeah, there's several. And, you know, Janelle and Pat did a very good job of alluding or illustrating the poverty problem. Mental health is a big issue. And HF 2456 is a good start for those 18 years of age or older. And there was another SF 2113... And there was another SF 2113 dresses those less than 18-year-old with suicide training in the schools for staff that have exposure with students or work with students. And those are important. But mental health affects everyone from every income level and every race and creed. And it's important that we address those needs. And we've had situations with our staff and our schools that highlight the need for improvement.
Okay, thank you. And this next one, we'll start back with you, Pat. Can you explain the term legitimate business interest?
Excuse me?
A quiz.
Quite frankly and honestly, no, I can't.
All right, no guesses?
You know, I'm not a big guesser. No, I'll leave it at that.
All right.
Phil?
Well, I think Pat's doing it right. Legitimate business interest. It sounds like something my accountant would talk to me about, something that way. But I would think it would be what's legitimately a business would have interest in. How about that?
All right, Janelle?
I think that term is often used when people want to make public decisions based on business interests. And that's just not something I do. I never once go into an issue trying to figure out what other people think about it. And I believe that we need a public and individual human interest element to all of our decisions, not a business interest to it. And so I don't know the premise behind the question, but I would just say it's not something I ever have considered in single vote I have ever made about any topic.
Okay. And this next one, we'll start with you, Phil. How will you change the 40-acre rule to encourage small farmers?
Oh, wow, yeah. I tell you, that one, in my going around and talking with people running for supervisor, one thing is abundantly clear, is that people that fall into that category of niche farming or smaller than 40 acres have nothing but concerns about how the present county treats their operations. And the number of hurdles they have to jump and the inconsistency, and one time they go to the meeting and it's this way, and then another hurdle is put in front of them. There has to be consistency, and there has to be...we have to recognize that small niche farming is going to be a growth area. It's a great opportunity. Our cultural center is the farmer's market during the summer and fall, and many of us go there to interact with our local producers, and we need to encourage and help it.
That's your time, thanks.
The problem with this discussion is it loses sight of where the fact that state law says that agriculture property is exempt from local regulations, which is what leads to CAFOs. And so to arbitrarily change the county's 40-acre rule would lead to urban sprawl and CAFOs. So we have to find a way to help small microfarmers in a way that doesn't lose local control. I do not believe any housing whatsoever should be exempt from building codes, and that's what agriculture exempt does. It also means that they...you know, the zoning doesn't apply. And so if you want urban sprawl, then change the 40-acre issue, and no local farmer will ever be able to compete for land. Developers will always win. We can work it a different way until the state legislature gets rid of the definition of agriculture exempt, but until then, it's a very dangerous topic.
Okay, Pat?
Yes, the 40-acre rule is really a tough question, and it's a struggle, as I sat in the supervisors' meetings and public hearings and trying to work through this issue. What I've found, as I've been campaigning throughout the county, is that farmers today come in all different shapes and sizes, and farming is a lot different than it was when I grew up on that dairy farm. One of the county's strategic initiatives is to, you know, embrace the farm-to-table movement. And the comp plan has a section about small farmers. And I know that the county is trying to figure out how to move forward with this. It is a tough question, and I can understand and appreciate all the different opinions. But it's something that we need to come together and work through and figure out, because, again, we need to support all these different types of farmers that are calling Johnson County home.
Okay, thank you. And this next one's to you first, Janelle. What can be done to reduce the county's budget?
So, the countywide levy is actually lower now than when I became a supervisor nine years ago. And the debt is lower than when I became a supervisor nine years ago. So the question is premised on the fact, I guess, that we're not growing. It would be really difficult to, for example, reduce ambulance and essential services. The county is working really hard to keep our levy as low as possible and to find efficiencies in every way we can. But, for example, I voted no on this year's budget. I thought the money that was being spent for conservation went against the taxpayers' trust when they voted for us, and that would have significantly lowered the budget. And so I think we have to deliver high-quality essential services, and we have to maintain control over the budget. But the levy is actually lower than it was nine years ago, the countywide levy.
Okay, thank you. And Pat?
I've sat through one budget cycle as the supervisors were negotiating this and listened to the department managers as they were presenting their budgets. And one thing I can say is that I think they do very well with the budgets that they have. You know, that's a tough thing as far as how to reduce the budget. I think that most importantly is that, you know, we need to talk with the stakeholders and department heads and really look collectively at the budget and see if there are any efficiencies and what can be done moving forward. It's difficult, it's painful, but it's a process that many times one needs to go through, and we've got to be sure that those stakeholders are involved in the decision-making, and then be sure that we communicate decisions to those stakeholders.
Thanks, and Phil?
Yeah. I would, as far as budget scrutiny, I would do what I do as a school board director. Since I've been elected, every two weeks I go through every check and every invoice. And there, believe me, in these large budgets, there are opportunities for savings that won't affect anything. I see a dollar bill as big as a bedspread, and I recognize that it's not my money, it's the sweat and toil of our community members, and that it's important that it be spent wisely and we be good stewards of it. And definitely, there's opportunities to look for greater efficiencies and savings that way, and every opportunity should be made to do that. But I do all of that, and every two weeks it's anywhere from $1 million to $10 million worth of receipts and invoices I go through, and I do that free of charge to every stakeholder in the Iowa City School District.
Okay, thank you. And this next one, we'll start with you, Pat. Although many Johnson County residents have their own means of transportation, the population without it has difficulty getting better jobs, shopping for food, getting basic healthcare, et cetera. If you could create a countywide transportation system, what would it look like?
That's a good question. I think we do need to create a countywide transportation system. I think, you know, that starts with the cities. And I know Iowa City and Corvail are talking about expanding the service, which is a very good first step. And of course, we know that in North Liberty, they tried to expand transportation last year, and that was a bit unsuccessful because the usage wasn't what they thought it was. So we're all talking about this. And again, I don't know all the answers about that, but I do know how to convene people and bring them together so that we can move forward on that. I think it is absolutely essential for those reasons stated there. You know, it's that quality of life, it's being able to get to work or school, those essential errands that need to be done. It is just critical that we have a countywide transportation system that is effective and works really very, very well, and includes all three shifts for those that are working.
Okay, thank you. And Phil?
Yeah, I think Pat hit on it pretty good. The other thing I'll put in there is roads and bridges. Got to make sure if you're having a transportation system, that you maintain your infrastructure you have. And it's important we maintain existing before we go new. And I remember as a kid riding my bicycle on a rural county road that was blacktop. Now, it's gravel, and it's gravel when it gets gravel. And there's a lot of roads in our community that need to be maintained, better than what they are existing. And as far as doing countywide transportation, yeah, it has to be well-coordinated with the cities to make sure that we're not getting redundancies and that there would be savings that way. And so that's a very delicate balance, and you have to be working with a lot of different communities and things along that nature. But we also got to make...not lose track of the fact that transportation is dependent on roads and bridges that are maintained properly.
Okay, thank you, Janelle.
So, the county now taxes the maximum that's allowed by law for roads and bridges, both from the rural basic and the general basic. We also have started bonding, at my suggestion, for essential roads so that we can take advantage of tax increment financing districts, so that they have to pay into roads also. So there's no way to put more money in roads and bridges than what we're already doing without a change in state code. For mass transit, I believe the solution is a regional transit authority, in that it should be the corridor, not just the county. I think that I've been a big supporter of both Amtrak and light rail, rail coming down from Cedar Rapids. I think the more and more people are traveling, if we can spend a billion dollars on flyways and third lanes, we can certainly find the money for rail. But there isn't more money than the federal government is putting into mass transit, and something's going to have to change, and I hope we can talk more...
Thank you. That's your time. And this next one, we'll start with you, Phil. Do you think employers should be held accountable when they fail to do adequate criminal background checks on employees, also background checks on whether they are cleared to work here in the United States legally?
Criminal background checks, yes, and that's important. As far as the legal status of an employee, that I believe that that's significant and that's important as well. But the other thing with employees is we have to make sure that we treat our employees well. And there's issue in the paper about a county employee that didn't receive proper treatment, or it doesn't appear to be. And it's very similar to a situation that happened at the schools. And I think it's important that when you're starting the discussion on employees, that you make sure that the employees you have presently working for you, they're treated well, and they have a grievance process when they can address when they've been wronged in the workplace.
Okay. And next is you, Pat. Oh, I'm sorry. It's you, Janelle.
So, Phil, you may believe everything you read in the newspaper, but you should be really careful about that. I'll just say that I am for banning the box. Employers usually have on their application, "Have you been convicted of something?" And we prejudge people based on their criminal background. And I think that's unfortunate. There are times for criminal background checks, and there are times that criminal history is stopping people from getting gainful employment. And I think employers need to be really careful about prejudging people. As far as immigration, I'll leave that up to the federal government. I'm not going to weigh in on that. I believe the county does a thorough background check on our employees, and that we have a grievance process and that we follow that.
Okay, Pat?
I do believe that the employers have a responsibility to do criminal background checks on employees. Having said that, I think it's also important that, you know, whatever shows up, that depending on what the employer wants to do, that he or she has a conversation with the employee. You know, we faced that many times at Oaknall, and it didn't automatically discredit someone from working, but it certainly started conversations many times. So I do think that's an important beginning. And again, I don't think that it should automatically dismiss all employees, but the employer can decide for him or herself how they want to proceed.
Okay, thank you. And this next one, we'll start with you, Janelle. Should the county general fund be continually used to cover cost overruns on mismanaged projects?
Well, so it's not usually the general fund, it's usually the Capitals Fund. And I'll just tell you that there are engineers building projects currently that may still have bruises from how upset I was at them for failing to do adequate soil bearing tests and ending up running our projects over budget. I think there are times that projects run over budget and you actually create change orders that the owner, in this case, the county, has authorized. Big projects have surprises now and then, but things that could have been avoided by better architecture and engineering, I believe that we should legally go after our professional consultants. And too often, we turn our back on that because it's...we'd rather just move on, and I find that wrong. I think we should hold people accountable.
Okay. And Pat?
I was just looking at my notes here. So what is the problem, mismanaged projects? In my time at Oaknall, I oversaw five projects, building projects, for a total of $80 million. Certainly, projects are going to have change orders, and there's going to be surprises. But I think the key to all of this is value engineering. And what that means is that, you know, you make good decisions without decreasing the quality of a project. Briefly, one of the last projects I did, the architect wanted to plant bamboo trees in the courtyard. Bamboo trees aren't native to Iowa, so they would need to have a heater in the winter to keep them warm and alive. And I said to the engineer...or to the architect, I said, "Gosh, you know, I would think that there would be a native tree in Iowa that would look really, really lovely in that courtyard and wouldn't be as expensive." You know, that's just one example of value engineering and trying to keep within a project and make good decisions.
Okay, thank you. And Phil?
Yeah. Yeah, change orders are when a...is either, as Janelle referred, is requested by the entity, or it's an unknown becomes known, or it's recommended by the contractor doing the work. And it comes before us. We're in the midst of $190 million bond construction and many of those things, so that comes before us quite often. You have to hold people responsible, and you have to go after people who are doing things shoddily. And it's important that we never lose track of the fact of whose money we're spending. There was a situation we had before the school board, the other...at the last meeting, $108,000 to plug in our buses. That works out to be $1,000, over $1,000 a bus. That was extreme. It was a one-bid contract, and you have to make sure that everything's competitively bid and that you have multiple bidders.
Okay, thank you. This next one, we'll start with you, Pat. How would you handle accusations of harassment or assault by one county employee about another? Are there any situations where this has happened, and how did you handle it? What would you do differently?
As the executive director at Oaknall for 22 years, when I left, we had 250 employees, so you can imagine the type of issues that we needed to deal with. I think it starts first and foremost with a human resource department. You need to have a department that you trust their opinion, they keep you informed, and they make good decisions. So, you know, I imagine, again, this is referring to the information that I read in the newspaper, and just like all of you in the public, that's all I know about that. What I do know is that, you know, any accusation by an employee, you need to take seriously, you need to move swiftly, and make good decisions to protect him or her, you know, and also the organization. So, again, it starts with human resource. You need to surround yourself with people who know... You need to surround yourself with people who know what they're doing.
Okay, Phil?
Yeah, I'm assuming this is a question from somebody who read the newspaper. But the school district had a similar situation where a employee was ruled insubordinate and was terminated. It came back to us. Our legal representation for the district recommended the termination. After looking and examining the facts in that, the employee had one evaluation and it was stellar and had a very good work record and was nationally recognized. And I voted to reinstate that employee with back wages because I felt she was wrongfully terminated. But with the present situation, that will be worked out. But you need to make sure that you have people that are, can think these situations through and recognize when employees are being wronged.
Okay, thank you. And Janelle?
I think it's important for governmental entities to have a strong grievance procedure and follow it. And so, it's important to have HR departments, human resources, that are thoroughly trained and that keep an open mind and do a thorough investigation. It's also important that anyone involved in the grievance process do a lot of homework, that there are a lot of sources, all the sources available are consulted and brought in, and that the investigation process is followed and thorough and keeps everyone's best interests in mind. Now, in the state of Iowa, termination files are public records. I think that's kind of unfortunate. It can destroy people's reputations, but the documents are now all public for public employees. And I think that is a problem in Iowa, but it's something people can use if they want to know more.
Okay, thank you. And this is one of our last audience questions. So, this is last call. If anyone else wants to add one more, otherwise, I'm going to read one of the league's extra questions after this and we'll wrap it up early. And we'll start with you, Phil. Do you support trails?
Like I said earlier, when I was a young man, I rode county roads on my HG Higgins and went on a blacktop road. I think trails are important, but we also have to recognize that our roads and infrastructure are important as well and that it should be a balance of the two. And it should be, you know, we have roads that are in need of repair now. And I believe that we've neglected those. I was at the Farm Bureau banquet and this year and last year, one of the top concerns with the county Farm Bureau was the maintenance of rural roads. And I wonder how many meetings we could go back and that would still be a topic.
Okay, Janelle?
It's illegal to use money from roads for trails. So, Johnson County has never done so. It's a separate pot of money. The county, in the past three years, has been at maximum taxation for roads, receiving all the grants we can possibly get and all the federal and state funding. Unfortunately, fortunately, the state raised gas tax, but the federal government has not. And so, I'm a big supporter of trails. It does not compete with roads. You cannot spend legally a penny that was designated for roads. We're taxing the masks for roads. I'm a firm believer in trails. I support trails. I believe the county needs to spend more effort building trails. I think they're good for our citizens and great for economic development.
All right, Pat?
I support trails also. I have been amazed at the Hoover Trail. That's around Ely Road and I think it's to connect Solon with Cedar Falls. And that's pretty exciting. I think it's important for that interconnectivity, not only neighborhood to neighborhood, but as I just gave the example, community to community. I also think that, you know, as we're thinking about attracting people to the county, this is one of the amenities that really do attract people and maybe younger people, you know, just starting families. So, it's a great amenity and it's something that I think Johnson County should really be very, very proud of.
All right. And this next one will start with you, Janelle. Are there any current processes within the county that exist that you think should change?
So, when I became a supervisor, we didn't have a finance department. We didn't have a reserve policy. We didn't have financial policies. We have almost all of those in place. And I'm very proud, our finance department's award-winning, but we are still failing on a couple of things that I think would really help the county in this area. We don't have a purchasing policy and a contracts and leases policy that's very strong. There's been resistance by elected officials and it can be an awkward balance between the Board of Supervisors and the other five. I believe we need more job sharing and floating employees and that we can lower overall costs by doing so. And so, I think those policies need to be in place. There are a lot of other things along the size of this area, but you only gave me a minute to try to answer that.
Okay. And then, next is you, Pat.
That's a tough one, again, because I'm in the audience just watching this process. But one thing that comes to mind and the county will be doing the budget again, is that I think that department heads need to have more independence when formulating their budgets. As the outsider looking in, it appears that they spend a lot of time with the finance department and then a lot of time face-to-face with the Board of Supervisors. And it seems that that process could be more efficient and, again, giving more latitude within certain parameters for those department heads.
Okay, thank you. Have you gone yet, Phil?
No, I haven't.
All right, you're up.
Okay. I would take a little different track on this and it comes from my talking with county employees since I've started in this supervisor race. And that is the retaliatory culture for workers in the county. And I had a listening post at the public library, which the papers neglected to put in the paper, but yet, the word got out to county employees and I just had one show up. And he said that there were many more that wanted to come and talk, but they were afraid that a picture would be taken or there'd be a screenshot and it would get back to their supervisors, their bosses. And you can't have an effective governmental body when you have workers that fear retaliation. And I think that that's something that needs to be addressed and it needs to have, I think, a new voice.
Okay, thank you. And this will be our final question for the evening and then we'll get into closing statements. And we'll start with you, Pat. Name an underserved population in Johnson County, an issue affecting them, and how you would go about changing it.
I guess I would talk about the elderly. Although there's livable communities, we've got an aging specialist at the county level. But, you know, I spent my entire professional career and a lifetime of community service in the cause of the elderly. So, that's near and dear to my heart. I think about universal housing so that they can age in place. I think about transportation. And of course, you know, that can apply to all marginalized communities. But I guess that would be one that I think, you know, the fastest-growing population in Johnson County and the state and probably the nation is the elderly. And I think that we need to really be focusing going forward on specific needs that they have in the county. And again, we do have the aging specialists in the livable communities.
Okay, thank you. And Phil?
Yeah, our Black and Hispanic residents. I look in the audience and the only minority is my wife. I think that it's important that their voices be heard and their concerns be validated. And I also think that it's important that we look at the services that we're providing for them now. And if the same people and the same budgets are going that way, are we really getting success with meeting their needs? And I would encourage, I have tried very hard to recruit a gentleman who's Black to be Republican supervisor candidate. I haven't been successful in doing that, but I will not stop. But I think when you look into the audience, we're not seeing enough of our community being represented.
Okay, Janelle?
I think there are a lot of groups that you could point out, but I will take a little bit different approach. I think the status of Medicaid in Iowa and the MHDS population, Mental Health Disability Services, is really underserved population. Iowa doesn't have a children's mental health system and that is coming to roost every single day. I think managed care Medicaid has been a disaster and the county government has suffered from that. We cannot pick up the slack that needs to be there. Despite almost doubling our mental health budget, it still is not enough and it can't be spent on children. And so, I think if I had to pick one, and it's really hard, I would pick the population that depends on Medicaid. They need strong leadership and they need advocates and we need to fix this problem.
Okay, thank you. Each candidate will now have two minutes to make a closing statement and we'll start with you, Phil.
Oh, wow, thanks. Again, I want to thank the league for having this event for us this evening. I want to thank all the people that came to this meeting and who are watching it and for all the questions that were given to us. I'm a simple, simple man. Like I say, I grew up, I've been born and raised in Johnson County. I've lived here my whole life except when I worked overseas. I come at things with a common sense, blue collar background. If you came to see the guy with all the answers and the smartest guy in the room, I'm sure you, that was dispelled. But I do seek, when I have a question that I have difficulty with, I seek the inputs from experts and people in those areas and work through it, work through that situation and make the best decision that I feel affects people in that way. And I just want to thank my wife, Anita, who, we've been doing this campaign on a shoestring. We're not the most funded, but I encourage anyone who wants to know more to go to, I have a website, if I get this thing here, I think it's a fairly easy thing to remember, HemmingwayForSupervisor.com, that's catchy. And I can also be reached at my cell phone, which is 319-430-9373. And anyone who wants to communicate with me by email, they can reach me at philhemingwayforsupervisor@gmail. I also, as an elected school board member, have an open house at my business every Friday from noon to one. I think I'm the only elected official in Johnson County to do that. And we'll do that as a Board of Supervisors as well. So, anyone who has any questions-
Sorry, that's your time. Thank you. And Janelle?
My name is Janelle Reddick. I'm running for reelection to the Board of Supervisors. It's been an honor to serve the people of Johnson County and to be a supervisor. I was told when I first started running by people who had left the Supervisors and become legislators, that sometimes they regretted doing that because in county government, you can actually get things done, which is hard to do at the legislature level. And we've accomplished a lot over the years, from minimum wage to community ID to a stronger investment in conservation and roads and bridges and catch-up of infrastructure that had been delayed for decades. We've put financial policies in place. We've created a finance department, just a ton of things that I'm really proud of, but there's still a lot of work to be done. The people of Johnson County need us. They need strong leaders. They need innovative, proven liberal voices at the table that will never stop advocating for people in need. I am proud to be the supervisor that constantly is agitating and advocating and expressing things that our county can do to make this a more livable community and more welcoming for all. I thank the League of Women Voters for having this forum. You're always there and always willing to educate people and get out. Thanks to Pat and Phil for the opportunity to be here. It's a pleasure to run for reelection. I want to thank my spouse, Robin Butler. It's not easy being the spouse of an elected official. They put up with a lot. And so, thank you. If this is our last go-around, I appreciate everything you've done. And so, thank you all. I hope you'll get out and vote, honor before November 6th. Voting matters. Elections matter. Every single vote matters and I would really appreciate your vote. Thank you.
All right. And Pat?
I am a strong, experienced leader and I know our county has served best through collaboration with all our urban and rural partners. I will facilitate cooperation, compromise, and common sense. I will provide strong fiscal management and prudent use of resources. I will encourage open and honest discussion. And I will treat county staff with respect and support professional development, mentoring, and leadership opportunities. But this just isn't about me. We've got two Democrats here and a Republican running for two seats on the Johnson County Board of Supervisors. And with the current political climate on the state and national levels, we must remember what the Republican Party stands for. The end of collective bargaining, underfunded public schools K through 12, most restrictive abortion laws in this country, state programs and services cut severely, hurting our state universities and community colleges, energy efficiency programs and incentives slashed or eliminated, huge tax giveaways to large corporations, and Medicaid privatization. What a dismal failure. We can and must do better. I am honored to be running on one of the strongest statewide Democratic tickets in decades. Together in unity, starting at the county level and working up the ticket, we will be the agents of change. I would be honored to have your vote honored before November 6th. Again, I want to thank the League of Women Voters. I want to thank all of you in the audience tonight for being here. Phil and Janelle, thank you. And again, it's really been my pleasure.
All right. Thank you, candidates. Thank you, everyone in attendance, everyone watching at home. Iowa City for the use of the facility, staffs at the local television station, Iowa City Channel 4, it's a long thank you list, and Iowa City Channel 4 for making this videocast and live streaming possible. We would like to remind you that the views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates and that the League of Women Voters' sponsorship of this forum is not an endorsement of any candidate. Remember to vote on the general election, honor before November 6th. Thank you. Good night.[1777.04][1777.04][music]